This meeting of the Prosper Independence School District Board of Trustees to order. But the records show that a quorum of board members is here, actually all board members are here tonight. And that this meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter five five one. With that, we are now going to go into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code section five five one dot zero seven one. When we are finished with our closed session discussions, we'll return to open session. The time is now six o'clock P M.
Thank you for your participation in today's discussion. We will be getting started in about 90 seconds.
All right, before we begin, we are going to ask that we keep this center aisle clear. Okay, the time is 7:29 PM and we are back in open session. We are going to proceed with tonight's agenda. Tonight trustee Dial has agreed to lead us in prayer. Trustee Dial?
Yeah, please bow your heads with me. God, we come to you tonight to just ask for clear minds. As we have board business to handle tonight, I just ask you to give us wisdom and discernment. I pray that we would come together as a community as we focus on the dealings of our school. I pray that we would come together as a community as we focus on the dealings of our school district. We love you and we thank you for how you've gone before us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for our agenda, we are going to go into public comment. Before public comment tonight, I would like to read a prepared statement. And so I'll read that at this time and then we'll go into public comment. "We understand and share the community's outrage over the allegations that a former Prosper ISD employee sexually abused students. It is our understanding that Prosper ISD administrators took swift action upon receiving a complaint about this former employee and that these actions included communications with law enforcement officials, CPS, and parents in the district. Although we have confidence that Dr. Holly Ferguson and her team have handled this incident professionally and ethically, the board has retained an independent firm to investigate this matter. This investigation is ongoing. We regret that in light of the litigation on this matter, we cannot share more information about this investigation or the allegations in the lawsuit." That's the end of this statement. Okay, we're now going to go into public comment. Before we do that, let me just kind of share with everyone how public comment is gonna go. Many of you have been with us before and so you know how this works. Let me just share this and then we'll go into public comment. "All public comments at regularly scheduled meetings should be limited to school district governance and operations. Please note that the board will not respond to comments or questions raised during public comment. Pursuant to Prosper ISD's board policy BED local, audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. When necessary for effective meeting management or to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including the establishment of an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allotted to each speaker. However, no individual will be given less than one minute to make comments." As presiding officer of tonight's meeting, I've set the overall time limit for public comment to thirty minutes. We have thirty-one speakers, so we're gonna have thirty-one minutes of public comment tonight. Each person will be given one minute to speak for the thirty-one speakers. The board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption, I'll be forced to prematurely end the speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, should any audience member or group of audience members become a disruption, I'll be forced to remove that person or group from the meeting. We're not gonna have that problem though, right? We're gonna all speak and everybody's gonna have their one minute. So let's jump into it. Again, we have thirty-one people and we're gonna respect each other. The board's gonna respect you and we expect you to respect the board because that's how we do it. So let's jump into it. And I'm just gonna go in the order that they were handed to me. I'm not going to reshuffle these in any shape, form, or fashion. I'm going to call, I guess, the first couple of names so that you know you're next up. So the first person speaking is Logan...
Baines.
Logan Baines, thank you. I was struggling, thank you. All right, so Logan Baines is first and then Logan is followed by Casey Merklin. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet. While we respect each other, let's respect our children also. "Thank y'all for allowing me to speak tonight. I have two children in Prosper ISD and my concern continues to grow regarding the transparency of high-profile topics such as well-being and protection of our children. In January of 2022, I brought a similar issue to the administration regarding one of my children at a Prosper school. My concern was an incident that was horrifying to my child and something that caused him to be scared to go to school regarding a teacher of the opposite sex. I won't go into details, but in the end, the district attorney, Jeff Crownover, did everything he could to justify the situation upon y'all's investigation or lack thereof to hide the issue and sweep it under the rug. My daughter was the one that was punished. She was the innocent one that was punished. Was this ever presented to the board? Doubt it. Parents put their trust in school districts to keep our kids safe and it's not possible when there's no transparency. How many things need to be swept under the rug before this administration's reputation will come second to our children's well-being? It's time for transparency on every issue." Thank you. Keep in mind, y'all are elected, not appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Baines. Ms. Merklin? Ms. Merklin is followed by Lindsay Rios.
Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and cut right to the chase. We're all here because we feel like our trust has been broken. I know, and it's not just the loud thorns and thot in the sides, like me. It's the people who just moved here who thought they came to the best district in North Texas and relocated their entire lives here. It's people who have lived here for ten years and have watched the district grow from a little tiny rural place into the big place that it is now. And if you feel like I do, like your trust has been broken, would you please stand up? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Merklin. The next speaker is Lindsay Rios. Lindsay is followed by Stephen Kellogg.
Good afternoon. My children attend the dual-language program at Rutgers and my son rode the bus to and from school as was in Mr. Frank's route during the 2021 year. Why was I never contacted? That my child could have potentially come in contact with a child molester? Why was I never told any of these things? Don't you feel like you have a personal responsibility to us as parents to know that our children may have come in contact with someone who could potentially hurt them? Is your reputation more important than our children? You guys are elected officials and you fell into the role because of our previous superintendent. Do you feel like you are doing your job? Do you feel like you did your personal responsibility to us as parents? I'd like to know.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. Our next speaker is Stephen Kellogg. Stephen is followed by Matthew Sack. Thank you.
Just very plainly, the public's trust in the people chosen to represent them, like trust generally, is very fragile, that trust. And once lost, it's very seldom regained. You need to understand that, as do we. The actions and inactions of the superintendent to date, since May actually, has had the combined effect of eroding this trust. The question is whether that erosion is irreparable or not. Recent revelations may not be the direct fault, when they occurred, of the superintendent, but she is responsible for what has happened since that time occurred in May. And it is indisputable that children are at risk. Those children's picture is behind you. And it's time that you take it seriously that this particular individual may not be up to the task to which she is currently occupying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Matthew Sack. Matthew is gonna be followed by Samantha Kim.
Like many of you here, I'm outraged about the lack of transparency from you elected officials. You're here to protect our children. We trust you each and every day with them, and the fact that there was no notification makes my blood boil. I moved here to put my kids in a better school district and I don't feel like they're gonna get the attention and the protection that they deserve. You please need to remember, we control your destiny. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sack. Samantha Kim is our next speaker. Ms. Kim is followed by... I don't think we're gonna be able to do that one. Followed by Cindy Johnnaling. All I have is a first name? Give me a second. Ms. Kim, let's go with you and then we'll come with Cindy Johnnaling?
Johnnaling.
Johnnaling, okay.
Hi, my name is Samantha Kim, thank you. I appreciate the statement that you made, but I have a few questions for your statement. Will you ever let us know who's actually doing the investigation? Because if we don't know who's actually doing it, how do we know it's really independent? And are you going to share the findings? Because if you don't share the findings of this investigation, no one is going to trust you. And right now, we feel betrayed and we have no faith. So I believe that we need to provide a follow-up statement, giving us a little more clarity on this investigation that you'll be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Cindy Johnnaling. Ms. Johnnaling will be followed by Tiffany Kearney.
We all know that even with well-planned policies and protocols, mistakes happen, bad things happen. It's how we handle these situations that reveal our true character. Prosper ISD leadership chose to keep the assault of two innocent girls quiet after the perpetrator's arrest and failed to notify the parents of other children that rode with this perpetrator, all in the effort to keep Prosper ISD's image untarnished. You have shown us your character and it is lacking. Prosper ISD leadership needs a full overhaul, top to bottom, starting with the superintendent and legal counsel. Everyone that worked to keep this quiet should be fired. To begin to earn back the trust of the parents and students, we need full transparency.
Thank you, Ms. Johnnaling. Ms. Tiffany Kearney is followed by Mr. Jim Herbland.
Good evening, my name's Tiffany Kearney. Thank you for having me this evening. I have twin daughters at the high school that are seniors. I have a son that is a freshman. I am here tonight after a great amount of consideration. I have listened to all the things that are going on. I have listened to the way that people want to assign blame to people. I am looking all around. I have a friend on this board who I know is not to blame, who I know couldn't even imagine the worst that this would happen. There are good people in here doing good work. But I will tell you this, I'm also here because in 2015, as everybody knows, the article that's being shared about Mary Beth Thomas, I'm Mary Beth Thomas's friend and I sat with her through that entire ordeal. And if Greg Wright and Dr. Ferguson, you were in this district when this happened, hadn't been swept under the rug, the whole thing is recorded and told, "How dare you, I'm so pissed off, what about this district, look what you've done," you would not have two children now assaulted. That man is the principal at Preston Ward.
Thank you, Ms. Kearney, your time is up. Mr. Herbland? I'm sorry, Mr. Herbland is followed by Kyle Sims. Go ahead, Mr. Herbland, thank you.
You know, it's interesting how you guys go back in a room and listen to your lawyer tell you to get in the chicken coop and be quiet and you're all protected. But you know who's not protected? Our kids. You guys continue to throttle pornography down their throats? People coming into school districts on a leash? Critical race theory? And what are you guys doing about it? Nothing. You gonna tell me you're working behind the scenes? No. Some of you new school board members? You might think your other colleagues are gonna come along with you? They've done nothing for over two years. They're not coming. Don't wait on them. You guys need to step up and take a stand. Stand alone, that's what it's gonna take. Because the rest of these folks are not coming with you. I've talked to some of them, they are not. They're still trying to balance politics with their faith. And guess what? You can't do that. So I want to encourage you guys to step it up and get...
Thank you, Mr. Herbland. Mr. Kyle Sims. Mr. Sims will be followed by Amy Lancaster.
Board, my wife and I have six grandkids, five granddaughters only age of fourteen. This makes me wanna puke. I'm sick of my stomach. This is a repetitious thing that's going around all these frickin' districts. It's the pornography, the abuse of children. Y'all were elected by the people to protect these children. Superintendent needs to step down immediately. We do need to know who's investigating this and we need resolution to this. This community is going downhill, just like the rest of them. Y'all need to get to work and you need to do your job. You need to have the courage to stand up and protect these children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Ms. Lancaster will be followed by Mr. Mike Bennett.
Hi, I'm Amy Lancaster. I'm an old Prosper person. I've been in this town twenty-four years. It is so disheartening to watch what you have done to our children. I am thankful my kids have graduated, but you are destroying the rest of these children in this town. They have fought with you and begged with you and pleaded with you to take these pornographic books out. They're still there. And then we have a meeting and you say they're gone and then someone looks them up in the meeting and there's the books in the schools. You lied to your people. You need to step down. And you all need to remember, we voted for you and we will vote you out. Find your voice.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Mr. Mike Bennett. Mr. Bennett is followed by Mrs. Holly Draper.
You know, some of the terms that are coming in place is leadership. Let's look at the word leadership for a minute. Leadership finally came around to giving us a public information on what took place these months ago. I mean, today. That's the leadership that's with us. Really, it takes three months to give us a comment on what took place? Yeah. So yeah, if there's a question of leadership, y'all are sitting in the chairs of it, that's for sure. And of course, I knew the phrase of the night would definitely be no comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Holly Draper. Ms. Draper will be followed by Mr. Doug Charles.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and thank you for the decision to do an independent investigation. That was initially what I was going to be coming up here to ask of the school board today. Now I'm asking that you identify who is going to conduct this independent investigation so that everyone in this room and everyone in our community can have confidence knowing that it truly is independent. I would also ask that the results of that independent investigation be made public with full transparency. Prosper ISD has a long history of trying to sweep things under the rug. That culture must be changed. We need to stop the policy of hiring from within. We need to bring outsiders who can bring true cultural change to this district. Our district's number-one job is keeping children safe and I encourage you to take that very seriously.
Thank you, Ms. Draper. Mr. Doug Charles. Mr. Charles will be followed by Mr. Tom Vars.
I've already heard a bunch of things that are already not worth repeating because they're all true in terms of accountability, but I want to challenge the board that you have policies that you can enact today to suspend with or without pay those who are immediately impacting and have had strong allegations. If there's not a strong allegation that's already been levied in that lawsuit, then I don't know what is. I would encourage you to use your empowerment and the procedures and the policies that you have. I do agree, there's a lot of people in this room that might disagree on a book issue or this or that, but what you see today is a united front. I agree that there is a culture of silence and intimidation. The one point that I would also add to all the other wonderful points, it's time to change where Prosper ISD police report to. It cannot continue to report to this board. It needs to report to the sheriff or it needs to report to Prosper PD because it is too conflicting to have Prosper ISD police reporting into this board and this superintendent giving them a weak scene.
Mr. Tom Vars. Following Mr. Vars will be Leah Ferguson.
Hello, I'm Tom Vars. I have a daughter in Prosper Independent Schools. I live near Prosper on the west side of the Tollway. And I wrote the board an email that I think the attorney should be incorporated with because I'm a product of public schooling myself. You know, I was taught how to read and I included some very important things that cannot be overlooked. And they include from the Texas Education Code, where we're talking about the definitions of roles, responsibilities, and the job duty descriptions of a superintendent, of the board of trustees. And there are some things that quite frankly cannot be ignored. And independent review, fantastic. Immediate response, something to consider during the review. Yeah, probably. No matter the success and accolades in the past, this instance has revealed who the superintendent is, how you understand...
Mr. Vars, your time has expired. Ms. Ferguson, Leah Ferguson? Following Ms. Ferguson will be Judy Neal.
I'm a parent of special education children and they've been attending here for just over a year. At this point in time, I feel like special education children have been widely affected. At this point in time, I would like answers on why children of special education and widely the district isn't answering emails and answering concerns. Sometimes emails are going sometimes for eight, ten days. Why administration and special education administrators aren't answering any concerns and at this point in time, why they aren't working in collaboration. At this point in time, what we can do to have the board maybe work with people, parents and teachers, to work privately... and teachers, to work privately, to do something to help these parents, to help you guys collaborate, whether it's outside companies or something to get concerns answered at this point in time. I think at this point, our concerns are being ignored and I have five children from kindergarten to ninth grade and I'm gonna be here a long time and I think other parents are having concerns too. And at this point, I think the board needs to take it seriously.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Judy Neal will be followed by Joshua Murray.
When I moved here from California, I thought I was coming to a state that had everything under control. Sadly, I found out that the schools here in Texas are just as bad as the ones in California. Some of the most heinous indoctrinations of our children are occurring within the realm of education and you should all be ashamed of yourselves. Rather than blocking us at every turn, you need to open your ears and your eyes and see what's going on in this country today. Rather than blocking us, I strongly suggest that the school boards work to ensure our parental rights, religious and moral rights. Your job is to see that our children are educated, not indoctrinated.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Mr. Joshua Murray. Mr. Murray will be followed by Kim Henshaw.
Hey, good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say that the institutions throughout our country are being broken down because people are losing faith and confidence in them. And it's because of people that are in leadership positions that when adversity occurs, they're unable to step up and take action, that are unable to do what is the difficult decision and it's sometimes like the hard right instead of the easy wrong. Over the last couple of years, I've had the opportunity to hear not just what occurs in Prosper ISD on the media, but also through concerned parents that have voiced their frustrations to me. And I'd encourage this board to look to the leadership of this board and to determine whether or not they are fitting to continue in this position. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ms. Kim Henshaw. Ms. Henshaw will be followed by Michael Cassell.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Kim Henshaw. I have a son at Prosper High School right now and I really came to say a lot of what everybody else is saying. Transparency is gone. I've been in this district for 10 years, raised two kids in this district. It's just, we came here again to move here for the best district that we thought in Texas and it's just not that. There's no transparency, there's no communication, there's a lot of lies going on, a lot of shuffling around, a lot of hiding, and we just don't need this anymore. So what we do want is for someone to step up and that should be you, Ms. Ferguson, and let us all know really what happened here. What happened? Why, why, why didn't we not hear about this? Why didn't we not hear about these children being molested on this bus? Why does nobody know this until an article came out? This is just not right. This is not acceptable and we need to find out who's responsible, who knew, and these people need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henshaw. Michael Cassell. Michael will be followed by Christian Ribby. All right, Perez. All right.
Thank you for the time. I'd like to try to be constructive with this time if I could. I have concerns that what I saw is first something that happened due to passive accountability being permitted in this bus situation instead of active accountability, which would be something more along the lines of regular reviewing of film. Two parents, two adults where especially where at-risk children are involved and younger children who are a lot less likely to have a voice. Passive accountability is not acceptable when it comes to the safety of our children and the school has an obligation to act in locusts, parentis. They have an obligation to deal with the safety of every child as if the parents would and should. And that's a legal responsibility that the legal counsel of this board should also remember. That needs to be attended to more seriously and that involves other children who may have been at risk, who weren't given legal advice or counsel. As far as I've seen, they were not given proper emotional support after. All of this has come to light. I haven't seen these types of actions. And finally, I know I'm probably short on time, but let me just say-
Yes, your time has expired. Thank you. Christian Rivera Perez followed by Emily Heidelbrand.
Hi, my name is Christian Rivera. I'm a parent of two kids, a fourth grader and a pre-K. And I come to you with a heavy heart. As a parent, we deserve to know a couple of things. We deserve to know when the Dr. Ferguson knew about this. We deserve to know when the board was informed. We deserve to know what steps were taken at that time to protect our kids and we deserve to know what are you gonna do now to protect our kids? We know it's not a matter of money. I was here two months ago and Poe came to you and asked for money and you increased the budget for those construction like that. So it's not a matter of money, it's a matter of will and accountability. Dr. Ferguson, you must resign. Everyone that knew and didn't take any action to keep our kids safe must also resign.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Emily Heidelbrand followed by Christina Binger.
My name is Emily Heidelbrand and I just wanted to say my heart really breaks for the victimized, the family that was victimized by the bus driver in this incident. And the more I read about this story, the more alarmed I am at just the number of red flags that were present throughout the case. As a concerned parent, I am, like others, I'm happy to see that there's gonna be an independent investigation. I hope the findings are released to the public and I also would like to know who's gonna perform that investigation. I hope that there's transparency throughout that process. And I'd also like to ask for the following, like the previous gentleman, a requirement that two unrelated background-checked individuals be present at all times with our students, random spot checking of security camera footage, increased monitors at school bus pickup and drop-off, and a rule written into the Prosper ISD procedures that requires school districts to notify parents timely in the event that their child interacted with someone at the school who's being charged with a sex offense. It's unconscionable that children who rode these buses, their parents weren't notified and they weren't able to protect their kids the way that they should have been.
Thank you for your comments. Emily, I'm sorry. Christina Binger followed by Gil Davis.
Hi, Christina Benninger. I was a single mom who raised three boys and not only that, but a child who was sexually abused. And let me tell you the irreparable harm you have done by sweeping it under the rug, Dr. Ferguson. I'm telling you now that those children are gonna have a lot of damage and anyone who has ignored these things, let me tell you, I'm a member of PFA. We help law enforcement by rescuing children from child sex trafficking for free. To see people ignore this, to see you sweep it under the rug, those children are more important than all of you up there. So if you guys are cowards and can't stand up for these children, leave. But I'm telling you this, I am demanding the immediate resignation of Dr. Ferguson and Chief Vessels immediately. Thank you.
Gil Davis will be followed by Lisa Cox.
I am a former student of Prosper ISD. It's very sad, it's despicable and disgusting what has happened over and over within the district. If this was an upstanding district, I think that Dr. Ferguson would have already been suspended, pending the investigation and removed of her quarter of a million dollar salary instantly. Our tax dollars should not pay that much money to somebody who is supporting these pedophiles within our school. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Lisa Cox is our next speaker, followed by Morgan. Morgan, no, I can't say your last name, I'm sorry.
I'm here as a concerned parent, a mom of two kids. My daughter just started kindergarten. The night I was up reading this article, I just kept thinking, like, how do I prepare a five-year-old for this conversation? So the next morning, I sat her on the couch and I said, "Okay, Charlotte, we need to talk about something real important. I'm gonna pretend I'm putting you on a school bus and if someone tries to buckle your seatbelt and they touch you inappropriately, what do you do?" And she said, "Mom, I say stop. I say, 'Don't, don't touch me like that.'" I said, "That's right." I said, "Okay, Charlotte, what if they say, 'I'm gonna give you this piece of candy and it's okay.'" And she said, "Oh, okay." Do you know how terrifying that is to a mother? We, we had to start back at the beginning. So I'm doing my part at home, but I need you to step it up. I need you to be there when I'm not. That's why we moved here. I need more from you. I give every ounce I can, every day, to my family. I coached 11 beautiful cheerleaders through PYSA and their souls are the most genuine souls that's walked the face of this earth.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Protect them, please.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. All right, Morgan.
I'm Morgan Grhovik. I'm here as a parent of two Rucker Elementary dual-language students and I'm a licensed clinical psychologist specializing in child and adolescent psychology. And my original goal was to get the independent investigation. I'm glad you're doing that, but please be transparent and give us all of the information. So I'm here to speak up for the families that don't feel comfortable being here today, the Rucker community that spent this weekend in a state of utter terror and hysteria and distress because we were never notified. We were not notified. This could have been avoided by sending a simple email to the community back in May and saying that you notified the families in writing, what day and time you notified them, and that there was a perpetrator, but it's been handled. Instead, we had to find out three months later and missed crucial time to screen other children for sexual abuse. That is not the best standard of practice. Any of these law enforcement can tell you that and know that and I'm sure your attorney has already told you that. We need accountability for why we now have additional potential victims.
Thank you, Morgan. We appreciate your time. All right, so let's do this. John, are you still here? I have no clue who John is. All right, we'll keep it moving. That is, that's the extent of, and that's the one that you all, I mentioned earlier, all I have is John and I have no clue who John is. That's the extent of public comment tonight. That's all of the speakers who signed up to speak. So what we're going to do, the time is now 8:02 PM. The board is going to take a very short four-minute recess and then the board will come back to continue on with tonight's agenda.
Sir, that was only 28-
It is now 8:06 PM, and we are returning from recess. We are now on item six on our agenda for the evening. We are at the public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Penn. Let's hear from you. Good evening, Dr. Penn.
Good evening. All right, so tonight, I'm here to present an overview of the completed, completed budget from the 22-23 school year. Culmination of work since January from a multitude of staff throughout our departments and the final series completing what we've been working on through the summer. These are the topics we go through in order. We'll discuss tax rate, any changes since the last meeting, revenue and expenses predicted for the year, changes from function from last year, and then we'll look at the food service and debt service budget. One thing I want to reiterate as we get into this, especially on this next slide with tax rate, is our school formula is funded on attendance of our students, counts in various programs. And that is made up by the local tax share base in a relationship with the state share, excuse me. From the state share. So as one side goes up, the other side goes down, but we are not netting more as a total on our maintenance and operations budget. So looking at our tax rate, this shows the historical values and the impact of tax compression over the course of the years. So our current tax rate is $1.46. Next year proposed tax rate is $1.44. And that's broken down into the three different pieces that we have. So the compression is happening on the, what's known as the tier one, just that basic entitlement. So that 84.6, that is a rate that comes to us from TEA, the Texas Education Agency, and that will be the floor. There's about 700 districts of, a little over 1,100 in the state that will have that tier one. That is the lowest tier one that you can have. The tier two, that 13 cents, is based off of what was 17 cents when the district did a TRE and through tax compression. It's remained at 13.83. And the INS at 50 cents is what is used to make the debt payments. One thing I want to point out later in the meeting, when there is the motions to adopt the budget and the tax rate, I want to be clear because there's some confusing wording that comes from legislation. So the motion reads that the property tax rate be increased by an adoption of $1.44, combines the rates, and then it refers to it as which is effectively a 16.44% increase. You can see that the tax rate is going down. The wording for that and the reason for that is the state compares our adopted rate to what is referred to as a no new revenue rate. So it's what would be the tax rate be if our tax levy, the money we collect, was the exact same as last year? Obviously, we have many more properties. The properties are increased in value. This no new revenue rate focuses solely on the tax levy side of the equation. It does not take into effect that the state would be offsetting that and reducing that. So it is a relationship between the two, and that's why it says that there's an increase even though our tax rate is dropping. It does not look at the state aid or recapture adjustment in our funding formula. Since July, most of the numbers have really tracked about the same. I've highlighted a few areas that we've got, just from transition anything since we met in July, just with additional enrollment and salary adjustments that we've made. These are some highlights and assumptions we've been talking through, just we've grown more students hopefully with, with less, hopefully it's not a variant that impacts our attendance severely throughout the year. And then there's a loss of the fast-growth allotment. What that means is by formula, we're entitled to 6 million more, but it's prorated from the state, so we don't see that. Those, we've kind of been talking through those throughout the summer. These are the revenue totals for this year. This kind of models what we're discussing a minute ago. So most of our additional revenue is coming from the tax base and not the state revenue. And a portion of that state revenue is really tied to the state's portion of our staff's TRS retirement. So it's really an accounting entry. The school does not see the money. We record the state's contribution to staff retirement. So we talked early on on if the district would be what was known as a recapture district or excess local revenue. Currently, we've not been identified for the 22-23 year. That's based on what the state projected our values to grow. Obviously, we've exceeded that. If throughout the year we do become defined this, where our, if we become identified through the year, we would actually owe that recapture money in the 24-25 school year. The reason it wouldn't be 23-24 is if a district has never been identified as recaptured before, they allow time for an election to occur. Used to, if you weren't identified at the start and you became it through the year, it was kind of a free pass. The state realized they were losing revenue on that, and so they have set it up where you would collect down the road. Currently, that's current legislation. So we'll have a legislative session between now and then, so that could change. But currently, that's how it's set up. Our general fund increases throughout the, the year. Again, about 80, usually 83-85% of our budget is payroll. That's the, the highlights through, through the year-to-date. I'm gonna go through and break the total down by function. We looked a little bit about this last time, but just kind of farmed up those numbers. Function 11, obviously our largest function, that's all of our instructional staff and instructional supplies. And you'll see the difference, dollar amount and percentage. So this is all the instructional leadership, campus leadership groups. And then in the support services and extracurricular, here are those changes from last year to this year. And then the supports, administration and plant services. I know we've talked a lot about this at length. If you've got any questions, I welcome those. And then, yep, yes, sir.
Just for people that might be wondering, can you explain some of the percentage increases? We opened one after the school and why some of these are big jumps?
Sure. Most of them, again, with the majority of our bulk being staff, most of them are people. We talked some, had some, I pulled some slides, kind of had them in there for a couple of months, but, and then just increase of inflation and costs that we've seen on a number of items. So, you know, instruction, so salary increases, number of people, and then costs. So a lot of our softwares, things like fuel, property insurance always goes up. And then even with opening one now with the anticipation of others, we'll actually pick up some costs associated with that later in the year. So we'll usually take care of those utilities for the last few months after we gain access to the building. So we don't occupy with school, but we are operating it. And, and so we'll pick up a lot of costs associated with those in later years. Those are probably the, the largest, largest reasons. Here, most of the, the ones on the, the difference here are really more of accounting changes. So like copier, or the 71 debt service is really a way of accounting for some leases. Used to, you could do things like copiers and printers on a campus would be function 11, but now because it's a longer-term agreement, through accounting standards changes, they would like to refer to it as debt. And so some like long-term leases, primarily things like copiers and printers and things like that, we've moved over there. Same thing with some of the 93, which is our, some shared service agreements we have that used to be in another function that we're moved here. Food service budget, so this is just kind of the anticipated revenue based on meals served and, and then the expenses from that. You know, this current year that we're in is really the first normal year we've had in a while with everything through COVID. So I'm getting, and we've also are working with a different food service management company this year. So we're kind of working through figuring all that out, but. And then debt service bonded debt, just break even. I think our tax levy will pay our, pay our debt notes, and that should be about even. And this is the budget as a whole. I know it is in the board packet. I know it's posted on our website, it's been ran in the newspaper, it's had all those things. It's just on one sheet for kind of ease to, ease to see, but it just totals all that up. Any questions on any of this? There will be a motion later in the meeting to adopt the budget and adopt the tax rate. So, and I know this is a public hearing, we can.
Are there any additional questions from any board members?
I have another question.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify for everybody because the motion is gonna be worded a little bit weird.
Sure.
We are reducing, between MNO and interest and sinking, we are reducing the tax rate from 1.4603 to 1.4429.
Right, it's about a 2.74 drop in the tax rate. It's, it's because we're gonna generate more taxes than we did last year. Like, and we discussed this, like you mentioned on that, that levy, we've got more houses, more property, the values have increased, but the state aid is, is offsetting. We're not, it's a, it's a relationship, and they're gonna do the tax base first. So I do think that tax compression and that model will be a topic this next legislative session, in the way they choose to handle that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Trustee Linker. Any other trustees have any questions? Okay, so then let's do this. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Penn. It's now time for a public comment on the proposed budget and tax rate. This is a time where the public will have an opportunity to share your thoughts with the board about this topic. Please understand the board will not respond to any questions from the public, but we do want to hear your feedback before we take any action, any action on it. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who desires to comment on the proposed tax rate? Okay, Phil, come on up. Sure. And just for the record, if you'll just share your name with us and then share your comment.
My name, oh yeah, Brian Lane. Can you go to the slide that showed the instructional? Yeah, the instructional increase in school leadership, so.
Is this the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. So I'm just proposing that if we're gonna give this leadership a 19% increase in our instructional leadership, not even 1%, why don't we go ahead and flip those? Because that doesn't make any sense. We're trying to get teachers, and we're giving this 20% increase? That's garbage.
Is there anyone else that has any feedback, any public comment on the proposed budget and tax rate? I'm sorry, are you gonna come forward? Are you gonna come up to the microphone so that we can hear your comments? And again, for the record, please share your name with us, and then feel free to share your comments.
My name is Lisa Torres. I have two kids in the school district. Just letting you know, make sure you add an investigation into that budget because that's gonna come at our dime as well.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Lane and Ms. Torres. Sure, come right on up. And again, just as I've mentioned with everyone else, if you'll just share your name with us, and then feel free to share your public comment.
Yep. Good evening. Miguel Sintra, my daughter goes to Rucker. Can you go back to the security portion of the budget, please?
Is this the slide you're requesting?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you elaborate a little bit more into what goes into the security budget?
Dr. Penn, did you speak to that at all?
We didn't get into it in this meeting.
Okay. Absolutely. So for the purpose of the public comment, your comment is gonna be based on the presentation form tonight.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else that has public comment on the proposed budget and tax rate? Okay. That being the case, we're going to close that portion of our meeting. We're going to continue on with our agenda. We are now at agenda item number seven, informational reports. And we're at 7A is financial investment tax reports for the previous month. And Dr. Penn, it's all yours again.
Okay. Financials for the month ending July 31st. So as we complete August, next month will be kind of the end-of-year look. This is going through our portfolio here. So we have the July, remember we sold the bonds in July, and those have sold for our building construction funds, which is why it's taken the, the large majority of our portfolio. I'm hoping that bond sale should last us for all the, the buildings we have going this year and then some. We have our general fund at 150 million. Remember, that's our kind of annual budget and fund balances included, bringing our total, total portfolio to 548 million. Looking at our general fund, our tax collections are, are in, really the bulk of our revenue minus the state programs, you'll see at 87%. We will have some August and September, and then really even beyond that, like minor settle-up fund. So that will all come through. It just, the way it's our payment class that we're on will be delayed before we receive those. Our payroll budget to date is at 84%, which is keeping kind of our overall budget at a little less than 82% year-to-date. The athletic fund, which is included in the general funds, all these numbers are included in the ones we just look at, but broken out. The change from last month is we've moved the camps into this. They were not previously included in this, but the camps are funneling through here now as well. So the money collected for camps and then the paying of, of staffs are tied into this as well. So that's 1.1 revenue and a little over, a little under 800,000 to date. So a surplus in that through the kind of the athletic fund for the, for the year-to-date. Our food service fund, remember on food service, the goal is really just to break even or have a small fund balance to kind of take care of equipment and things like that. So one of the items later in there is an amendment because we have exceeded the, the amount budgeted on the food service meals. This is really a direct relationship on how many meals are served. So as we sell meals, our expenses go up and the revenue goes up. The amendment is a larger amount because we're trying to anticipate what will come in August. Because by the time we meet in August, the month will be closed and we won't see, I won't see you all. So I'm sorry, losing track of what day it is. It's covering for that. So it won't be that we're going to spend all of that, it's to make sure that we don't, don't excel. So revenue and, and expense are covered for what August might, might look like when it's all done, our invoice. And so that's run through food service. But I do anticipate a surplus at the end of the year for food service. And then debt service, again, all of the taxes are in on debt service. The remaining amount is our August payment, but we will be in under budget when, when this shows up next month. But we did make our August payment and have stayed in budget on that. I'll kind of run through quickly. We've got multiple projects going now, so we will start seeing more and more slides included on the construction one. So kind of give you, I know you've had this for a little bit. I'll let you look at it for a minute and, and then kind of, kind of move through. So Liliana's getting started at a 13% of it in on that contract. Sutton Fields getting going, elementary number 17. Both of these, and the early childhood next one, anticipating opening next year, early childhood school, also opening fall of '23. And then the Walnut Grove project at 53%, expended and 46% remaining. I know we've got some updates on those in a minute, but financials on any of those.
Any questions for Dr. Penn?
Thank you.
Dr. Penn, we're now at agenda item 7B, update on enrollment. This information was our, in our packet. We also received an additional link, just so we would have access to the actual report in Excel format. Dr. Ferguson, is there anything that you want to mention as it relates to this?
We're up to 24,661 kids today, enrolled 36 additional today.
Anyone, any questions about this informational report? All right. Agenda item 7C, updates on construction projects. Do we have a video tonight? Oh wow, we have photos and.
It's Liliana Elementary.
Right. Nice.
Dan Christie Elementary will actually be breaking ground. You can see it's a piece of property right now. That will be happening in September, and that's located in the sub, built subdivision on the northwest corner of the district.
Any questions or comments as it relates to those? Okay.
The early childhood school located on the south end of our district on Lookinbach, appropriately named because this school will have a Texas design inside. We're very excited about it. We have 18 classrooms right now sitting at Reeves Elementary that have our precares in them. And then we have several other pre-K programs sitting at dispersed amongst our elementary. So that's gonna give us quite a few classrooms back once we get this early childhood school open.
And all of those will go to this location?
They actually will go to kindergarten, and we'll take on.
That's a very good point. That's, that's a good point.
Well, then we'll take on another group of four-year-olds and some three-year-olds.
Looks different than what we're used to. It does.
And then Walnut Grove High School, making really great progress on that po construction, especially with the drought. It's allowed us to get ahead quite a bit because we didn't have rain, which meant that the men and women on that site can continue to work. And so we've made, we're about three to four months ahead on that project, which is a huge win for us because it's 600,000 square feet that we're trying to construct.
There's a lot of construction going on. That's elementary 16 and 17, high school three, early childhood school, and then now middle school five.
Yes.
All right.
So this is a prototype, kind of a. So this is a prototype, kind of to give you an idea of the design that we have landed on for Daniel L. Jones Middle School. So we wanted to bring this to you so that you could preview this and kind of see what is the building going to look like. Just as a reminder, this will sit adjacent to Rock Hill High School, which is right there off of Hardy between the two schools. And so I'm excited, not only because of the Daniel L. Jones Middle School and the beauty that it will bring and the namesake, but also because when you think about being able to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and bond funds, we'll have the availability because we'll have tennis courts, we'll have athletic facilities. So there's a lot that we can probably do between the two facilities with Rock Hill High School as well as Daniel L. Jones, since they're so close in proximity. So it'll be nice to have those together to be able to utilize them. I'd like to thank Josh Brown and the Huckabee team. I know I see Joe Tremblay over there too. We really pushed a lot on this design because of the special name that is going to be on this building to really honor Daniel Jones and his commitment, not only to Prosper ISD, but to the prosper community. So I want to say thank you to both of you for really embracing that and locking arms with us to, to land on a beautiful design for Mr. Jones.
Well done, guys.
Yeah. Anybody else, any questions, comments on the informational reports?
Our kids will be proud to go to school there.
All right, we're at agenda item 8A, consideration and possible action regarding the 2020, I'm sorry, the 2022-2023 Prosper ISD annual budget. This information was in your packets and we've seen the presentations. I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the 2022-2023 Prosper ISD annual budget as presented by administration.
Thank you, trustee Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Dial. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of this one? It's all seven of us. Okay. Red agenda item 8B, consideration and possible action regarding the maintenance and operation tax rate and interest and sinking tax rate on the 2022-2023 school year. Again, this information is in your packet and we've seen presentation on this as well. I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.0442, combining a maintenance and operation rate of 924.09 and an interest and sinking rate of 50 cents, which is effectively a 16.444% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you so much, trustee Cavender. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Beavers. Is there any further discussion?
But it's just.
For clarification, I'd like to point out, because the wording and the language in which we have to write this, what the state standards are, it's saying increase, but in essence, it's not. So just to give you a little bit of historical information, we were at $1.49 three years ago. Last year, we were at $1.46 and now we're at $1.44. So it's actually going down. Now, your property values are not going down. That's where the rub comes, but the actual tax rate is being compressed. So I just want to make sure that the public understands that because this language is extremely confusing and I'll just thank the state of Texas on that.
Thank you so much for that clarification. That's similar to what you were saying earlier, right, Mr. Linker?
Yeah, I just was going to ask for one more clarification before we pass with that language.
Understood. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor and there's a second. Is there any, are there any additional, any additional discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor? That's all seven of us. Agenda item 8C, consideration and possible action regarding cooperative management fee report. This information is in your packet, so I would ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the cooperative management fee as, report as presented by administration.
Thank you so much, trustee Smith. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, trustee Dial. Is there any additional discussion that we'd like to have on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion? That's all seven of us. Agenda item 8D, consideration and possible action regarding food service budget amendment. This information is in your packet. I would ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the food service budget amendment as presented by administration.
Thank you so much, trustee Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Cavender. Is there any additional conversation that you all would like to have on this one? All right, all in favor of this motion? It's all seven of us. Agenda item 8E, consideration and possible action regarding fund balance assignment. This information is in your packet. I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the fund balance assignment of $10 million as presented by administration.
Thank you, trustee Beavers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Any additional discussion on this one? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for, all in favor of this motion? All right, that's all seven of us. Agenda item 8F, consideration and possible action regarding the final three-year exemption renewal of full-day pre-kindergarten. This information is in your packet as well. I will ask for a motion.
Well, I just wanted to clarify on this, that this was part of that HB3. I know there's some conversation in the community about why we're offering some half-day, but my understanding is it was explained that we did try our best with the, within the private community to try to get as many kids full day as possible.
You're 100% correct. And obviously, being one of the fastest-growing districts in the state of Texas, what we've run into is trying to accommodate all of our early childhood students, which you all have made a great decision on getting this early childhood school on the ground. What the state said with HB3 was, go ahead and you can start moving towards a full-day program. We in Prosper ISD really wanted to make sure that we were intervening with our youngest learners as soon as we possibly could. And so we went to what is called a blended pre-k program. And that would serve our students who qualified for the program, special education students who qualify for the program, and then certainly as a retention model for our staff and a recruitment tool for our staff to secure certain amount of seats within those pre-k classrooms for our staff. We tried, obviously, we've gotten as many full-day programs that we could possibly put in place, but then it becomes a matter of space for us. And I think I mentioned earlier that we have 18 classrooms already being utilized at Reeves Elementary. And so we need to get that space back, but then thinking about where do we put kind of this overflow. And so it pushed us to having to go to a half-day program. Ms. Cogan and her team did an excellent job along with Dr. Hickey's guidance and leadership. We looked at eight different early childhood potentials because we could contract with the different services that exist right here in Prosper. So that would be like your kids are kids, Montessori schools, those types of settings. But what we found is that they were running into the same issues as us. They didn't have teachers and staff or they were at full capacity. Prosper is obviously a destination district and a lot of people are landing here. And we know the reason why is the education that's provided to our students. And that goes as far as also into our early childhood facilities that are not Prosper ISD, but for these families that need care and education for their kids, early intervention. So again, very excited to get the early childhood school open because we'll be able to get our four-year-olds, the new crop, the three to four-year-olds, into the building and get them educated.
Does that help, Ms. Dixon?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I will ask for a motion on agenda item 8F.
I move that the board approve the final three-year exemption renewal of full-day pre-kindergarten as presented by administration.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Dixon. Any other, any other discussion on this one? Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of this one? That is all seven of us. Agenda item 8G, consideration and possible action regarding the 2022-2023 district improvement plan. I don't think we could miss that in our packet. I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the 2022-2023 district improvement plan as presented by administration.
Thank you, trustee Dial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Cavender. Any discussion on this one?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
This is a kind of a two-part, Dr. Ferguson, with the district and campus. I think we're all proud of our A rating we got, but we had some schools drop from A to B. I know it's a flawed system, but I just wanted to kind of see if you could briefly touch on some of the highlights on what our plans are, both at the campus and district level to bring those up.
So actually, there was a summary for each of the campuses within your packet and they specifically hit the areas that they are targeting. What you have to understand and recognize is that as we grow and we continue to add elementary schools, middle schools and high schools, the school community starts changing. And so we used to be where it looked very similar. We only had two elementaries or three elementaries in the district or maybe two middle schools. But as we continue to grow in the face of a Prosper ISD student changes literally daily, we have to adjust and pivot in order to meet the instructional needs of the students that are in front of us. We'll have students who come in with second language demands and those things may not be on, say, the north side of the district, but they may be heavy on the south side of the district. We have campuses that qualify for Title I, which provides some additional services for students who fall into an economically disadvantaged area. And so we want to also be able to take care of those needs. You'll see too, response to intervention is pretty heavy within those summaries for each of our campuses. And what they're looking at specifically is how do we go about intervening with our students and getting the proper supports in place based on the assessments that the teachers have done within classrooms? But then also, what are the services we have available on a campus, whether that's dyslexia services, special education services, ESL services, gifted and talented services. So it can kind of run the gamut of what those needs are. But what we want to do is continue to move towards that academic push. One thing that we have to keep in mind too, with Prosper ISD, because we are one of the fastest-growing districts in the state of Texas, one of the measures on the state accountability system, which I appreciate you saying that it was flawed or that it is, has some flaws in it. And this is one of the flaws when it comes to a district like Prosper ISD. You have students moving literally from all over the world. And in the student progress measure, what you're looking at is a coherent sequence of testing events. So for example, if I use a third grade reading score and then I test that same third grader the following year in reading in fourth grade, I now have a progress measure because that, that child tested in the state of Texas in a Texas public school and took a star test. The kid who moves from California in third grade, although may have done extremely well, well, wait, let me use fourth grade. The child who moves here in fourth grade from, say, California or New York or New Jersey or Bora Bora, they're not going to have a progress measure because there was no Texas test that was given to them. And that actually hurts many of our school communities. And it doesn't mean that the kids aren't progressing. It doesn't mean that the kids aren't achieving at high levels. It's just in that measure, it will really kind of knock us to our knees a little bit. Because when you look at, gosh, I'd looked at this for years with Windsong Elementary, for example, because they had a high population of children moving from the state of California. I would go into the classroom to go say hi to kids and I'd be like, so where did you come from? And I would find there wouldn't be one kid who'd come from a Prosper school. They had come literally, so you'd have 15 kids, 18 kids in front of you and they'd all come from across the nation. And so you don't get a progress measure on those kiddos again, but they may have been achieving at really high levels. We'll get it eventually because they stay with us. They don't leave, as we know by evidence of our student enrollment. But that hurts on the elementary end. You'll see more of a push into that A area that you're talking about with our middle schools and high schools. High schools also get a little bit of a bonus piece and they get to participate in something called CCMR, which is college career and military readiness. And there are certain points that they can get. Our elementaries truly are, I go, a kid goes and they take a test on one day, we get that score and that's what happens. So if it was a bad day, sorry, that's the score you get. And so they don't have anything else to really kind of help support that. But our campuses work very diligently, campus administration, I can't say enough great things about them and the way that they really go head in on this instructional piece, working through our professional learning communities where we work with our teachers to improve our instructional practices. Any other questions?
I just want to add though, to what you just shared, Dr. Ferguson. In addition, board members, to the information that's in your packets, on the, on the website, under today's agenda, there is a document out there for parents to be able to, to review. It's a campus improvement plan executive summary. And so it's a 21-page document. And so it has a page for each campus and allows parents to see the details of essentially what you just shared and answers, it speaks to your question.
And now that you all, once you approve these two, we have to get approval before we can post it on the website. So the full and entire plan will be out there. So if a parent wants to pull their campus improvement plan for Bryan Elementary, they can pull that plan and read word by word what they have in there. Our campuses also with these campus improvement plans work with their campus site-based teams and that's comprised of community members, parents, teachers and staff and the administrators, and they do formative reviews at least three times a year to check in on the progress of how are we working towards these goals and how do we feel as a school community, we're making progress. We do the same thing at the district level also.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to campus administration, to district administration, specifically to the side-based committees, the community members that are stepping up to serve in this way to help support those individual needs of each campus. So appreciate that.
Appreciate that. They, we've got some really great, amazing parents in this district who are always willing to help out in a productive manner and I appreciate that.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor as regards to this one. So all in favor of this one? All right, that's all seven of us. It's agenda item 8G. Let's go now to agenda item 8H, consideration and possible action regarding 2022-2023. The campus improvement plans? So that was the district. Now we're at the campus improvement plans. Is there a motion for this one?
I move that the board approve the 2022-2023 campus improvement plan as presented by administration.
Thank you so much, trustee Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Smith. All in favor of agenda item 8H? So seven of us. Thank you so much. Agenda item 8I, consideration and possible action regarding class size waivers. This information is in your packet. I will ask for a motion.
I got it. I move that the board approve the class size waivers for August 2022 and for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year as presented by administration.
Thank you, trustee Beavers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Dial. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor? That's all seven of us. Agenda item 8J, consideration and possible action regarding the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System, TTESS, appraisers for the 2022-2023 school year. This information is in your packet as well. I will ask for a motion. This is on 8J.
I move that the board approve the Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System Appraisers for the 2022-2023 school year as presented by administration.
Thank you, trustee Dixon. Is there a second?
A second.
Is that trustee Beavers? Thank you. Any additional discussion on this one?
Dr. Ferguson, so this is, this is, obviously the, the document in front of us shows that all campus administration, does that cover the need there that all? campus administration, does that cover the need there that all were accomplishing the goal?
It does. Obviously, on our fast-growth campuses, at the elementary specifically, we've added an additional leader, which goes back to that instructional leadership piece that Dr. Penn was talking about. But that also helps with just kind of managing, because some of our elementaries running larger numbers, we wanted to accommodate by lowering class size, but then also adding those additional administrators so that our teachers were getting good, solid feedback, which goes along with what Mr. Linker was saying with the instructional piece and within that campus improvement plan.
Great, thank you.
All right, so we do have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion regarding this one? Okay, all in favor of Item 8J? That's all seven of us. Item 8K, we're almost there, y'all. Consideration and possible action regarding Board Policy Update 119. This one was in your packet. This is the TASB update. So we have information on it. I will ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve Board Policy Update 119 as presented by administration.
Thank you so much, Trustee Beavers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Any additional discussion on this agenda item? All right, all in favor of this one? That's all seven of us. And we are now at Agenda Item 8L, consideration and possible action regarding RFP 4068-2022, data cabling and services. This information is in our packet as well. I will ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve RFP 4068-2022 related to the data cabling services as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Dixon. Any discussion regarding this RFP, this agenda item?
I just want to thank Mr. Dave Lasco for thinking ahead, because this is, because of all the shipment issues that are occurring, he's trying to get ahead so that we have the equipment ready to go for all of the campuses that we are constructing.
Thank you, Mr. Dave Lasco. All right, all in favor of this motion? That is all seven of us. All right, that takes us to our action items. Let's look at Agenda Item 9. Agenda Item 9 is the approval of the consent agenda. And in consent agenda, there are four pieces. There was regular meeting from 7:18. There was special meeting from 7:21, special meeting from 7:25, and special meeting from 8:17. The minutes are in our packet, and so you've had an opportunity to review those. I will ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you so much, Trustee Smith. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Dixon. All in favor? That is all seven of us. All right, we made it through. We are now at Agenda Item 10, closed session. We will now go into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, .072, .074, .076, .082, .0821, .087. When we are finished with our closed-session discussions, we will return to open session to take any action items that need to be taken. The time is now 8:53 PM, and we will go into closed session.
Alright, the time is ten twenty-three P M. And we are now back in open session. Do I have a motion related to hiring contract personnel?
A move that the board approved the hiring of all contract personnel is presented by the administration.
Thank you trustee Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you trustee Dixon. All in favor? That is all seven of us. Um, do I have a motion related to any land purchases?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the purchase of land for a new school site for forty million dollars as presented by administration.
Thank you trustee.